Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Thursday, December 12th, 2019, Planning Board Workshop Meeting, Town of Scarborough, Maine. If everyone can join me for the Fledge of Allegiance, please.
The Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, Jamel, can you do the roll, please?
Sure. Mr. Dupree, Ed Ripson.
Here.
Mr. Bealy.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Ladd.
Here.
Mr. Mind King.
Here.
And Ms. Saunders.
All right. The records show that Rick Mind King will be a voting member this evening. All right. First item and only item of the agenda this evening is Crossworld Holdings LLC request a master plan review for the town center residential neighborhood within the Downs. Jamel, Morgan.
Thanks. I'll kick it off, I think. So the applicant's in front of the board this evening to continue the review of the conceptual master plan for the town center residential neighborhood at the Downs. The applicant was last before you all in October for the first review of the master plan, and since then, town staff and the development team have met to discuss the overall plan and details to help inform this recent mission package. So the applicant has provided a refined package for tonight, including updated plans, proposed street designs, updated space and bulk standards. So staff has provided several comments about the proposed space and bulk regulations that suggested further refinement prior to final approval. Just a reminder, the master plan is intended to help understand the proposed scale of development and types, and the materials did not seem to define the lower, moderate, and higher densities proposed within the project. So the board should discuss these density ranges this evening. Staff recognizes that the applicant is depicting right-of-way's within the easterly portion of the project. The delineation of streets is not shown like they are throughout the rest of the project, so staff has recommended that these plans depict interconnected streets within this portion of the project. The applicant also included the proposed street designs and updated connectivity plan that shows the different types of streets with this submission. So the board should be able to discuss these street designs and the overall street network, the applicant, this evening. And finally, staff has continued to recommend the applicant provide at least 100-foot buffer adjacent to the riparian zone along the Willowdale Brook to help preserve and maintain the health of the stream. It was unclear to staff this buffer, the length of the buffer, based on the materials. The applicant should just be sure to discuss that with the board as well. There's a host of other review comments from the memo provided. These are really the main elements identified for discussion purposes. I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Jamel. Rocky or Dan?
Dan's gonna start it. Thanks.
I'm gonna jump up here. Thank you all, and I know this is certainly a busy time of year, so I really appreciate, in particular, the board kind of being out on and off night and discussing this updated master plan with us. So thank you in particular for that, and thanks to staff for having a meeting with us. Since our last presentation to you, we had a good department-level meeting with Jay, Jamel, and other key staff to kind of talk through design details of this master plan. I thought I'd do a kind of a PowerPoint presentation to show you the updated plans since our last discussion, also kind of walk through the plan development requirements and how we believe we're kind of meeting those requirements. I can talk about staff comments that we recently received and how we are addressing them this evening and can in the future. There's also, you know, with the master plan, it's, there's a lot of material that is also informing what's going to be reviewed in the future at subdivision, so we want to kind of talk about some of those things because there's only so far we can really kind of go before we do some hard engineering to answer some of these questions and to kind of move the process along. I'll give you an update on the status of the state permitting, and we had been hoping for approval this evening so that we can proceed further with addressing some of these comments that are many or kind of more at the subdivision level, so we wanted to kind of talk about, to the board about approval and maybe conditions of approval and next steps. So just to orient everybody, I know most, if not all, of you were at our last presentation, but this is the, obviously, the overall Scarborough Downs site that you're quite familiar with at this point. Nick rotated it just to keep everybody on their toes, so north is actually up here and Route 1 is down here. The area in orange is the area that we're talking about this evening for this town center residential master plan area. In terms of, you know, as you come in from Route 1, it's essentially just north of the first phase of the project, the first mixed residential phase that's here, and it's really just south of the grandstand, the inner and the outer track. So as you drive into the site from Route 1, it's, as the trees kind of open up and you look towards the grandstand. So we provided some updates since the last submission and also in just recently, in the last few days, on this plan in response to staff comments. One is regards to, well, let me kind of back up and just kind of orient you again. So the proposal is to have a mixed residential neighborhood with interconnected streets and to kind of build on the wetlands and the conservation area that's on the northern end of Phase 1 and to really focus development along the Downs Road, which is about here.
Not built on.
Oh, did I say built on?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll slow down. Not built on. The Downs Road is here, so add some level development along the Downs Road before it opens up into this area and then create a gridded neighborhood that really transitions from, let's say, higher density along the new Downs Road. The Downs Road would be realigned to kind of go off alignment here to go to the west to create a more kind of cohesive neighborhood to the east of the Downs Road. Really, along the Downs Road, it's going to be the primary street. That's where we're envisioning more kind of multifamily townhouse, and as been talked about with the board and staff, if there's going to be some light commercial, which we would love to see, there be some small office, maybe some small retail that could be viable here, we would see that along the Downs Road. In this area, that's kind of in darker red, and we added that category since we've received staff comments. Before, we said it could be here, here, it could be all along the entire corridor. From a kind of transect or density standpoint, we're envisioning that the housing types and density kind of taper from more multifamily and townhouse attached-type housing along the Downs Road to cottages, to single-family, to duplexes, to the east, really kind of being from kind of red, being more attached and more dense, to less dense, being kind of the yellow, towards the Sawyer Road neighborhood. There's also that 100-foot buffer to the Sawyer Road neighborhood. So we've added kind of housing-type categories to this diagram to illustrate that. Another change and update is we're getting to know more about the soils and the suitability for stormwater, and based on additional analysis, we're planning on doing a gravel-wetland feature in this central park area because that's the best location for that type of stormwater, in stormwater in general, and we're pretty excited about that. DEP's excited about it. From a treatment standpoint, I think the gravel-wetland is the best and can provide the highest level of treatment considering the project and the watershed that we're in. So, and Nick is working hard on designing that into the project in a way that can be a focal point. The other staff comment that's addressed on this diagram here is, these are the sections of street that we hadn't shown a roadway in. The intent was not to ever, not to suggest we weren't going to build those, but rather phase it while the outer track is still in operation. So, but ultimately, when the outer track is no longer necessary, then that road will be interconnected, so it'll have no dead-end roads, interconnected streets. Another update that we made since the last meeting on our infrastructure plan and phasing plan, we've identified where there is overhead power, which is along the Downs Road, to handle the three-phase power that's out there today and necessary to serve the project, particularly the commercial aspects of the project, to the north of this area. And then from there, we've illustrated where it, power goes underground and serves the neighborhood, the remainder of this phase in this neighborhood. This plan also shows an initial idea around phasing, being the initial kind of major phase would be in tan. We anticipate there's going to be kind of subphases within each block, and that's driven by stormwater and by the sewer shed, and where this portion of the project can be served heading towards Route 1 by sewer, which dictates in part this phasing plan. And then this area in green would be a later phase, have its independent stormwater treatment, and would be served likely by a future pump station up here or through other means in terms of sewer, but would not be served towards Route 1. We thought it would be helpful to kind of walk through the various plan development standards. So that's what we've used as kind of the guidance around what our design intent with the master plan, the kind of the level of detail we're trying to get to with the master plan, and how we believe we meet the plan development standards. Mixed use is the first requirement, and that's something that can be provided district-wide, meaning the entire Downs, but also is, you know, where possible, desirable within each plan development. So this is a mixed residential community in phase, so it's mixed use in terms of different housing types. We do hope to integrate those light commercial uses in a few places, as I outlined, but as I think the planning board's well aware, this is also part of a much larger project that already has commercial activity in the Innovation District, and we're excited to be kind of starting to think about the town center next. So within and district-wide, we believe this is a meeting that mixed-use standard. The other, the next standard is kind of overall location pattern of development and needing to be consistent with our site analysis, and this is the site analysis that we did earlier this year, and this is that area shown as an appropriate development location. So consistency there. Public water, having interconnected looped system. We've been pretty deliberate about having that interconnected street system. This shows the, that street system and also the infrastructure plan, so the public water system's going to be within the street system and it's going to be interconnected. We're starting conversations with the Water District on the details of that, and we'll do more through subdivision. In terms of open space, there's a 10% open space requirement. We're going to be kind of well beyond that with the combination of open space that we're providing in this phase. And we've been thinking a lot about how it relates to other phases of the project. So, you know, in the brown color is kind of the wetland areas that is going to be in open space contiguous with the open space in Phase 1. Also, the Willowdale Corridor has a conservation easement on it, and we're going to provide a buffer to that, so that's the open space area, bad aspects of the project, and we're starting to kind of create our open space framework that's more active, that's more park-focused, with an interconnected kind of greenway through the center of the neighborhood that will connect sidewalks down to Phase 1, but also it'll lead into future phases as we head towards the town center. Related to this is the, kind of related to open space natural resource protection, is the 100-foot kind of setback requirement that we have through DEP to the Willowdale Stream. And so Nick provided this good cross-section that kind of illustrates the different levels of setback. So, under the town zoning, there's a 75-foot stream overlay. We're going beyond that with a 100-foot stream setback through DEP. In places, the, and then there's a conservation easement that applies to the corridor from a DOT permit. So in places, the 100-foot setback is more restrictive, and other places, the conservation easement creates an even greater setback. In some cases, it's 125 feet. In addition to that, our intention is to kind of program a linear park between both the stream protection boundary and the conservation easement and the Downs Road with a bike path, some stormwater treatment areas, et cetera. So that's our intention for adding additional kind of protection to the Willowdale Stream. It meets DEP's expectations and the conservation easement, and we think it's a good approach along the stream corridor. And with the gravel-wetland, we're kind of working hard on protecting the stream and providing great kind of treatment with runoff headed towards the stream. Relationship of buildings to the street is one of the kind of key plan development standards, and the space and bulk standards are very tied to that, and we're kind of gearing those to have very kind of minimal front setbacks, to create that strong relationship of buildings to the street, to create that compact, walkable pattern, and we've kind of layered in neighborhood, a neighborhood patterns section to our master plan, which is kind of design guidance that piggybacks on the space and bulk to say, okay, this is where, let me jump to that, this is the excerpts from the neighborhood patterns, which is design guidelines, and it really kind of illustrates for subdivision review the relationship to the street of buildings based on the unit type or the dwelling type, and also the relationship to, say, alleys. So it's hard to see from your seats, but it's in your package where we have a street layer which varies, the depth varies based on the unit type or the housing type, but that's where we expect front steps, front porches, stoops, and then we have a facade layer. And if there's questions, Nick can get into kind of more detail during discussion where we expect the front of buildings to be. And then on the reverse, we have for at least alley-loaded lots, we have a garage, a garage layer on the back where we expect the entrance to garages to be, and then we have, with street-loaded lots, we have a kind of a garage layer, and that's where we expect the front of garages to be so that there's adequate kind of parking in front of the garages and they don't interfere with sidewalks in the street right-of-way. So we think with this guidance, at least at the master plan stage, this is kind of great directives that through subdivision, we can get finer-grained when we've had engineering plans, when we have an architect that's fully engaged in laying out things that we can bring to you. We think that getting too fine-grained in space and bulk at this stage, I think we're going to trip, trip up and kind of get ahead. So that's relationship of the building to the street. Access management interconnections is another one of the standards that we've been working on and provided in this submission. The neighborhood pattern guidelines, we think, help with that a fair amount in terms of where we're not going to have a lot of access points along streets because there's going to be private alleys that handle a lot of the unit types, and then where they're, and as the further you get into the neighborhood, the more there will be driveways, but the lower volume the streets will be where that's expected. And then along the Downs Road, which is really the street that we think access management and the staff thinks access management is the most important, like Phase 1, we're going to have kind of strategic access points. It's not going to have a lot of curb cuts along the Downs Road. It's going to have kind of major street intersections, maybe a few alley intersections, and that would need to meet, you know, the town's site plan review ordinance and subdivision ordinance in terms of making those connections. This is in your package, and it's a general kind of connectivity plan that illustrates some street hierarchies. In blue, of course, is the Downs Road, and then in kind of red and black are more kind of neighborhood streets with concepts for alleys in many of these areas to, again, kind of focus access, limit driveways, and have those be more kind of limited on the periphery of the neighborhood in fewer locations than you would typically have with a residential neighborhood. Streetscape treatment is another plan development standard. It relates a lot, we see, to the street standards and the access standards. We've, we've designed our master plan to be consistent with that. We're working pretty hard to design the project with complete street design principles, which the zoning asks for kind of rigorously. I would say that the street acceptance ordinance is trailing that rigor because the town's street acceptance ordinance right now is, I would say, a bit out of date, a bit out of sync with subdivision and site plan and zoning. So part of our challenge is not really wanting to call streets specific classifications because we don't know enough about, we don't want to kind of prejudge our street classifications and then ask for waivers from you that may not be necessary. We want to kind of work with the board on what's the right design for the Downs Road, what's the right design for the neighborhood streets, and work with you through subdivision to kind of figure that out. I think most standards for the Downs Road make sense, but if it's designed exactly to a collector's street standard in the Town of Scarborough, then our curves are going to be designed like you would design maybe Route 1 or Payne Road versus a complete street design. So we've kind of intentionally not classified these streets and want to talk to the board this evening and then at subdivision review about specifics around the street cross-section, frankly. So what we have here is the Downs Road. It's laid out basically exactly like Phase 1, where you have 11-foot travel lanes, you have bike lanes, you have opportunities for sidewalks on one or both sides. There could be a multi-use path on one side, particularly along the linear park, is our vision. And then on the other two streets, we're envisioning those as to be neighborhood streets, again, 11-foot lanes typical of residential streets in Scarborough, and then providing opportunities for on-street parking depending on the types of units that are along those streets. So if it's an alley-loaded, single-family home or townhouse, we'd expect on-street parking to supplement that, you know, alley and garage to the rear. If it's street-loaded, single-family homes, for example, we're anticipating there'd be some places where there's on-street parking for guest parking, but otherwise would be a, you know, a 22-foot wide to 24-foot wide street. The fourth category is we have a cross-section for our alleys, and we've reviewed that with staff and sort of learned from other projects in town and tried to make that design in a way that works best for residents, but also kind of trash removal and fire access and service vehicles. Walkable pedestrian-oriented design. We've laid out the, obviously, it's a grid, as I've talked about. We've laid it out in a way to be very walkable and anticipate having sidewalks on all of these streets and also having a trail system that is a component to that. We're planning a trail back to Phase 1. We need to get a wetland permit to cross a narrow wetland. We need to get a wetland permit to cross a narrow wetland to get that trail. So it's very in the hands of DEP and Army Corps, just in terms of getting that permit, but our intention is to apply for that permit and, and be able to build that trail. We're also planning, like I said, that bike path trail along the Downs Road heading up towards the center of the project. So placemaking is, like we've talked about with other phases, a big component to this district, and it is also for this phase, like it has been in other phases. We're starting to, to figure out kind of some of the ideas around placemaking. We are interested in trying a few pocket neighborhoods within the project, which is a pretty cool and exciting kind of neighborhood design where the house is front green and are accessed from the rear. That's this image here. And so, that's a place for that particular neighborhood, and the houses are focused around it. We're also looking at, and Nick's kind of working hard to figure out how to complement the, kind of the gravel wetland that would have grasses and be sort of an attractive space with some paths and maybe a boardwalk that integrate and make that a focal point and not just a stormwater feature. And then have some green space, active green space along it. So it's, there's space for, for play and kind of activity gathering. On-street parking is another plan development standard. We've incorporated a fair amount of it with this phase and think it plays a key role in providing additional guest parking, supplemental parking. It's also really important from a kind of a traffic calming standpoint and protects pedestrians on the sidewalk, and so we think it's appropriate on, on most of the streets, including the Downs Road where it's, where there are straightaways and housing that relates to it. In terms of the dimensional standards we provided, our proposal on dimensional standards, the additional space and bulk standards, they're very similar to Phase One. We're proposing to add some based on staff comments that we want to talk about with the board this evening. As came up through staff comments is, you know, what's the appropriate building height, say, in this phase versus maybe the center of the project or other phases of the Downs, given it's more residential? And so our proposal is, recognizing that, our proposal is to establish a four-story height limit for this residential phase. You know, we don't anticipate, you know, a lot of four-story buildings in this phase, but like Phase One, the Uplands is a four-story multifamily building. We think that's appropriate. We think it fits the character of Phase One. And we, we see that this phase is similar to Phase One, and it's, it's actually transitioning towards the grandstand building and towards the center of the project. So, again, we don't anticipate many four-story buildings, but we think it's important to have that ability, like in Phase One, in those multifamily areas and probably along the Downs Road and probably closer to the center of the project. Another standard we certainly can add that is in our neighborhood patterns, so the guideline section, so it's, it's covered there as well, but it, we certainly can add it as a sort of a space and bulk requirement, is having a minimum garage setback of 20 feet from public sidewalk, which I think is the biggest concern, is having, you know, enough stacking for a car to be interfering with a sidewalk along the street. We'd want to kind of word that setback thoughtfully so that it's not necessarily a 20-foot setback to, say, the side of a garage, or we want it to be to the garage in terms of where the parking is in relationship to, like, the front of the garage, the garage overhead And, I mean, other than that, I know that Eastern Village has, and I've talked to staff about sort of specific space and bulk standards that are a bit more specific than what we've provided in Phase One and here. What, and if there are additional ones needed, what we'd ask of the board is establishing them through subdivision because that, we're not yet at the place that we know whether it should be three feet to a front step or five. And we feel like the neighborhood patterns guidelines give a lot of direction to what's expected in this master plan, and through subdivision, we're going to then have engineering, and we're then going to have everything laid out so that we can be very precise with house placement. And with a neighborhood like this, that specificity is pretty important. It's not as much in an R2 or an RF subdivision. So, we would ask that if there needs to be additional space and bulk, then we could figure that out through subdivision with the board and staff. I guess the final plan development standard that we wanted to walk through and, and we've talked about it at the first meeting, is affordable housing. The Uplands is providing a lot of it and provides a pretty generous credit towards this phase and future phases. I know they're not approved yet, so it's not a shoo-in, but their approval's going to occur, you know, over the course of the winter and spring. And if for some reason it doesn't move forward, then we'll provide, we'll meet the requirement within this phase. So, we're not, you know, we'll certainly meet the standard. We expect the Uplands will be approved and we'll be financed and move forward, but in the instance it doesn't, we certainly will meet the standard within, within this phase like we did in Phase One. So, that's kind of how we see our compliance with the master plan. Nick's done a lot of hard work on kind of creating what we think is a pretty cool, exciting neighborhood that's going to transition pretty well and feel pretty good and have a, a great mix of housing types that, that work well for the market and, and work well for the project. And we're kind of on the cusp of, to, to get much more fine-grained, we need to jump into kind of engineering and architecture and, and take the next step. Because without kind of grading, without street design in more detail, I think we're probably not going to be able to address too many more of the comments. I think a lot of the comments are great, and we expect to handle those through the subdivision site plan process. So, and I think that's also where we can get into more specifics on placemaking and, and open space design and trails and all those things, following the master plan guidance that we've updated. Parallel with, with this process and then just as much subdivision site plan, we're work, we're starting to work with DEP on a couple of levels of permitting. I think I talked about this last time a little bit. There's an overall site law permit that we're now getting for the entire site that kind of sets parameters in guardrails for the build-out of the project. But then as different areas come forward with development, very similar to, to the town's master plan process, we would then get into more detailed, what's called Level Two, review of the things that they want to look at kind of area by area, which is stormwater, infrastructure design, natural resource impacts, things like that. So, we're starting that process with DEP and we'll ramp it up as we get into our more detailed subdivision design and review with the board. It's going to be concurrent review, so that'll just track along with the, the town subdivision review process. DEP has that requirement for the 100-foot stream setback, as I discussed, and there's some kind of modest wetland permitting that's likely, like the trail crossing. There's some isolated wetlands that we'll be proposing to, to permit while preserving the, obviously the vast majority of the wetlands. DOT review is similar but different. We've applied for a traffic movement permit modification that's ongoing, and this is sort of like DEP, more than this residential phase. We're at, we're looking for permitting for kind of the next forecasted, really kind of the next five years' worth of kind of development so that we're not always applying to DOT, and they understand what's the bigger picture and can gear requirements and improvements and mitigation at a bigger scale. And then there's going to be kind of triggers for when things need to be done. So we've incorporated this residential area into that larger approach, and then we'll have, you know, thresholds. When you reach this kind of trip, you need to make this intersection improvement or, and so that's being done. Town staff is very involved in that, as are their peer reviewers, and, again, that's being handled at the same time as this process. So, that's our overview. Sorry for walking through every plan development standard. I'm happy to go back to anything, and, and Nick and Drew and Rocky are here to, as we get into conversation. We're at the point that we want to really kind of fine-tune this master plan and be able to kind of make, take the next step and be able to get into that finer detail, which probably most already are interested in. And to be, kind of be clear on next steps, I know you've done this a few times now, and what we're thinking about for the next residential phrase, phase is to, is to, you know, there's going to be multiple reviews. There's going to be a subdivision review to kind of lay out in a phased way, the road framework, lots, blocks, open spaces. And then, a bit like Phase One, there's going to be site plans, site subdivisions for maybe individual blocks. Or where there's a multifamily project, it'll be site subdivision, and that would come after the, the initial subdivision layout. So, stuff that you probably know, but I thought was worth mentioning in general. So, that's what I have. Turn it back to the chair.
Thank you very much, Dan. We do have an opportunity for public comment this evening. If there's anyone here that would like to speak, just approach the podium and state your name. Seeing none, closed public comment. So there's a, there's a lot to take in on this, of course, it's a big project, so. Kind of want to, kind of want to try to focus some of the discussions on specific topics. I think that would probably, probably be the better way to approach this, just to hopefully give them some clear direction as we see here, and then after we kind of figure out a couple of the bigger issues, then maybe just open it up to the board for anything in general that we have a loose end here or there that we haven't kind of tied up. So one of the things I'll just start with, I think the setbacks, I think that's, I know a good explanation, which is it's tough for us to kind of say for sure right now, the second, this is what all your setback's going to be. I think the one thing that, when I was looking at it, caught my eye is there was one section in there where it looks like it's variable. So, if you put, you had a 10-foot spacer, so this one could be three, that one could be seven. And I, I wondered in general just how, how code enforcement might view something like that. If he's, is he running out there all the time with a tape measure to make sure that you're keeping your buildings just far enough apart? You know, I think that was probably one of the concerns I had with the moving line, and wondered if, and I'm just spitballing, I'm not cleared this with anyone, whether or not setting a hard standard, allowing the flexibility for you to ask for a waiver, you know, say it's five feet off the line no matter what, and then, but still saying within this phase, come and say, you know, there's a reason why we want this building here and this one here, and allowing the board that. And I don't know if that makes staff's life miserable, the applicant's life miserable? I don't, I don't know how that plays out, but I'm trying to figure, trying to make multiple, I think entities happy as they develop this.
And I do, I do think it's worth noting, and I appreciate sort of the, the Dan statement and development teams for trying to figure out how to do space and bulk as they're building this. But the standard is pretty clear that space and bulk is to be approved as part of the master plan. The Eastern Village has a different process. It refers back to Section 7. So I, I guess I want to be pretty clear that it's staff's interpretation of the ordinance, and we've actually talked to our attorney about this on a, not because of this conversation, but that this is the time, this space and bulk needs to be approved for this phase. So I understand that presents certain challenges, and I think, you know, maybe to your point, Nick, we're providing some level of flexibility, and we can talk about what that might look like, but just wanted to sort of make that point early, as I know. But yeah, I, I think maybe in, in terms of, Nick, if I understand where, where you're talking about, sort of that side yard setback, and I know typically we have sort of a 10-foot separation, and that has to do with fire codes, and I think that's where the setback talked about, at least a 10-foot separation. And so maybe some of the question is, well, if there's a property owner who buys a lot first and puts their building two feet from their property line, they've really now dictated for the next property owner who buys that they now have to be eight feet from their property line. So it's sort of first in dictates what's happening, and it, you know, again, I know some of this might not be as difficult to administer with the first round of development, but certainly as properties are around for 30, 40, 50 years, multiple owners, buildings need to be rebuilt, sort of how those variabilities work. I think really trying to codify that a little further from an administrative and from a future property owner's perspective of knowing what they can do, rather than sort of looking at the book and saying, oh, great, I've got a zero, a five-foot setback, not realizing, well, actually you have 10 feet because the other guy's, or other properties at zero. So, so I think there are, there are some things to, to continue to work through.
Any, any board members have any specific thoughts on that, or even the applicant, if they have thoughts on kind of what we're, we're saying here? Not that I expect full solutions this evening, but Roger?
Yeah. With this concept, is this different than Phase One? Okay.
I have two comments. One is, I mean, we're proposing space and bulk. There's been comments, so it's not like we're ignoring space and bulk. There's just been comments about should there be a minimum, except primarily a minimum setback from the front yard, about stoops or front porches that might be, I think it's being asked to not just have design guidelines around that. Correct me if I'm wrong on that. But we're proposing space and bulk. They're just minimal.
I think the side yard is what seems to be the one that moves left or right.
Right, yeah. And I think there are other districts in town where there's side yard flexibilities, but I don't know how that's been an issue really lately with code officers.
Yeah, and I actually was able to have a conversation with our code officers today, and, you know, one of the, one of the areas that we have that is Higgins Beach in particular, where we have our form-based zoning. And I think part of that conversation, particularly with, with the folks in the fire department, where, you know, Higgins Beach is a different situation. That's a neighborhood in which there's a lot of non-conformities. There's a lot of buildings that are already closed. It's pre-existing conditions. And so, yes, the, the form-based zoning provides some additional flexibilities, but it's moving things further towards conformance. I think the, the comment that we heard from the fire department is, here we're building a new neighborhood. So, if we can get ahead of having these issues, then we can do that. And there, there are other ways of doing it. They also mentioned that, you know, using sprinkler in buildings. So there, there are ways to get at these reduced setbacks through the codes, but just need to be, so like, in, in, you know, I'm not, I don't know all the building codes offhand, but I know, you know, the, the statement was basically, you know, that if the buildings are sprinkled, then you don't have to worry about the 10-foot setbacks. That becomes, that those issues go away.
Yeah, no, we were, the intent around that variable setback was really around garages, not homes, which is, maybe that was our, I have made a mistake in not being kind of clear about that, but.
Detached garage?
A detached garage. So the, to provide some context, the idea is with smaller lots, especially when they're garages in the rear. garages in the rear, because there's an alley, garages can create fences. And if you're allowed to shift a garage over, then it can be basically a fence to your neighbor. And, and also kind of creates more yard space on the other side for you. And so, at the apartment meeting, we talked about that with the fire department, about where if there's, if that's done with planning, through construction process, then as long as, you know, they're providing that separation between the garages that they expect, then it shouldn't be a big deal. So it wasn't intended to be single-family homes or other types of houses that wouldn't have a setback. It was really detached, you know, the garages, that. And maybe it's not warranted the right way to kind of get at.
Yeah, to add a little bit more clarity there, so we were talking about that for specific areas where we might have a detached garage, be alley-loaded, be detached garage. So in the areas of this project that we're going to do that, this type of setback might, might be warranted, might, might really work well. In other areas of the project where we may have front-load garages, it's not going to work. It's got, it's not going to go that way. We don't need that. So it was really for specific areas, and that's why we were saying, if that can, if we kind of kick that can down a little bit, then when we come in for the subdivision, if we're going to do that style unit here, then we would want to talk about that kind of a setback. But if, instead of doing that style unit, it might be a different style unit, then we may not need to talk about that, because it won't apply. That's why we were looking for that flexibility. And if I added confusion, I apologize. But without knowing, I mean, if you think about what we're doing here, we don't know exactly what type of unit, we've got several different types of units. So we don't know exactly what type of unit is going to go where on that plan yet. We've built in a lot of flexibility, so that, you know, if we start with one style unit, boy, that really sells well, people really like it, it works, we can do more of that. Or if, or, you know, gee, that one isn't really the best one, another style would be better, we've got flexibility and we can do that. So, and that's how we're thinking about this phase. We're thinking about this phase where we come in, when we come to subdivision, and when we break off bigger lots, and then those will then be further subdivided, once we know, all right, over here, we want to do this style unit, over here, we want to do that style unit. We'll come back for those at further subdivisions. So at that point, then we would know, do we want that, do we need a different setback, or does five feet work? I think that's what, I'm oversimplifying it or confusing things, it's not, but.
Yeah, I think some of the discussion we've had at the staff level, because Nick, the board has comments, obviously, stop me, was really sort of twofold. One, wanted to be sure that, you know, as part of this discussion, is, staff doesn't necessarily, you know, just wanted to raise and be sure the board was pretty explicitly understanding that, you know, with, with sort of this, with the note the way it is, that it may be that one property development dictates how far setback another property has to have its building from a property line. And if the board's comfortable with that, staff is as well. It's just, we wanted to be sure that that conversation was had and understand that that's part of what's happening. And then as we had that conversation, it was really around, not so much the first, and I said this before, not so much about the Rispera team building. It's, this is going to be there for many, many owners and add-ons and those sorts of things. So how do we get at those issues? And there, there's ways to do it. So again, I think what would be helpful, if the board's comfortable with the concept, we can find a way there. We just need to know that the board's comfortable with that concept, that one property may ultimately depict or decide what another property can do in a certain extent.
If I can build on that, Jay, so what I'm, what I'm thinking, but what we're thinking about is, okay, we get to an area where we know, all right, we want to do 15 of those style lots, we're going to come to you to do a subdivision, and we're going to know that in this area, it's going to be 15 of that style lots, where we want those garages staggered. We're going to know that right at subdivision and go right on the subdivision plan. But until we get to that subdivision, today, we don't know where that is, or whether we even really need it.
So I guess that's kind of where I was probably driving my original question, and not just for you, but for staff and this board, is that that concept of, is it possible to put five feet in? But with language stating waiver can be granted during the subdivision phase, which still allows you the flexibility, however, you now are going to get a standard for each subdivision that comes in, so down the road in the future, whatever subdivision that person wants to add on, it's defined. And I know what you're, it's kind of trying to do two things, almost exactly what you're saying, but almost exactly what they're saying.
Yep.
Which is, you want to kick it down the road, I'm saying, okay, this could work, is we could put a number on it and then.
Only to subdivision.
Right.
But if, once we get that subdivision plan approved, it has that setback on there, now code enforcement's got something to work with.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, subdivision plan's going to have a building envelope on it.
Yeah.
So, a building envelope's either going to be like the neighborhood patterns one that shows five feet on both sides, or for these garages on this alley that we're designing, the building envelope's going to be 10 feet on one side and zero on the other. But without that note, there wouldn't be the flexibility to do that other alternative, which can create, the thing that we're wrestling with is kind of creating nice places within a more compact neighborhood, like this is, it's important to have a little bit more green space and use the garage as a fence, and you gain, 10 feet doesn't sound like a lot, but on small lots, it can be pretty valuable. So having that flexibility to design a better neighborhood, I think, as long as it meets fire codes.
Yeah, and I think what I was also going to say is that, if, you know, if we're all thinking about these two-acre lots that we've been building on forever, and people get a lot of flexibility and they can build anywhere, well, we're not going to have that here. We're going to have, you know, we've got a narrow lot, that garage can only go in one place. Once we set those, you're not going to slide them around, or you're not going to do this lot one way and then flip it and do the other lot opposite. It's, they're all going to have to stack, or they won't fit. So you're going, we're going to know a lot more than you typically would know, you know, on a lot, really on.
And I do think, you know, one thing, I'm sorry, Rocky.
No, go ahead.
I don't think we, staff sort of appreciated the comment that Dan was just making, that, okay, the minimum setback is still going to be five, you know, as this, and then as the note says, zero to 10, but then subdivision plan, typically a subdivision plan will still just show five feet all the way around, on every single lot. But if, what I'm hearing, and maybe that was the piece that I wasn't quite getting.
I didn't say it, so.
Maybe I'm making stuff up and getting us there, but.
No, no.
But it sounds like if the subdivision plan's going to say, okay, lot owner, lot buyer of lot one, you have a zero split, you know, zero because of this footnote, so you get there. Buyer of lot two, you know you're buying a 10-foot setbacks, and it's shown on the subdivision plan.
Because we know where those garages fit.
At least then, I think that, that was the issue, that we wanted to be sure property owners knew that, yep, okay, there are these variable setbacks, but you've now bought this. You had variability, we've taken it away, you've now bought this.
And from a, from a design side, too, the nature of this being a master plan community, we want to be cognizant of the fact that sometimes these master plan communities can be, become very homogenous, especially if you're very prescriptive in the beginning with setbacks and the way buildings layout on the site. And we want some flexibility and be creative in letting each of these typologies, as we design the building, to each lot specifically for the site, there's some flexibility that's driving a little bit of a pattern, and we're not just prescribing it all at the beginning. So I think it's going to make for a more interesting and more genuine feeling neighborhood, ultimately. And we just, we just need a little bit of that creative flexibility at this point.
So I don't know if there's language that'll help clear up the footnote that we can work through, or it seems like there could be more to define it.
Again, I think, sort of understanding that, and it's helped clear things up in my mind, so obviously, I don't know if it has for board members, or board members even cared to begin with, so I'm sorry to take up time and hit this. But again, I think what we, you know, clearly that might need a little more work on some language, but if we can get an understanding from the board, if you're comfortable with the direction that we're starting, that, you know, I think we're heading, and maybe I started to articulate, then that can help us sort of really refine this thing.
I think that, yeah, I think a fair question to the board members right now is, how do you feel about allowing for more of a variable setback type of environment versus, you know, the, there it is, guys, you know? Any thoughts?
I will say at the beginning, my engineer brain sort of was like, ugh, on having something that was, you know, zero on one side and 10 on the other. But, you know, the explanation about a narrow lot with a garage in it, and I just pictured, you know, like somebody's new backyard with a garage, like smack dab in the middle of it, and maybe you only have 10 feet on either side of that, or your garage is fully on one side, and I have 20 feet of backyard that you can do something with. So that completely changed my opinion. I, I understand, if that is your intent, I understand that, appreciate it, and I think it's a really creative approach to, you know, a tighter lot development than what we have to, that we're typically familiar with here. But I do like the idea of it being sort of pre-prescribed or predefined at the subdivision level, so that it's very clear from there what you, what space you have within which to work.
Yeah. Yeah, we should have said this in our application and talked through it further, but our intention is to have building envelopes established at subdivision that where we're going to do these variable setbacks, or at the zero instead of five, that it's on subdivision plan, so that it's clear.
intrigued by that.
I mean, the other thing that Nick's worked on more than I, but we've been thinking a lot about is with these smaller lots, we actually anticipate houses probably in a lot of cases to be, not necessarily in the middle of a lot, but closer to one setback, particularly when it's to the north versus south. Like we, these are kind of narrower, longer lots, where yards are going to be on the side of, on the south side of the house, and then in the back of the house. And we'd love to have sort of the house and garage kind of be lined up, and then it not be too prescribed, not every lot that way, so that we're really kind of maximizing the proper size of the house, the solar gain, the orientation, and feet matter on these lots.
Yeah, and when you, you think about these lots, you get five feet on this side of the line and five feet on this side, what do you do with five feet? So if it's, if it's shifted, I hope this guy's got 10, well, he's got 10 on this side, so.
It's like one and a half lawnmower paths.
Yeah, you know, I mean, what do you, what do you do with it, right? But you can kind of line it up, so you've got usable space.
And the.
And the idea of, you know, the garage being the fence, giving you some privacy, giving both sides some privacy, kind of made a lot of sense to me.
And to Dan's point, you know, about orientation and thinking specifically about each lot as a, as a site, you know, these lots are going to, the orientation changes, you know, with the orientation to, you know, the sun and wind, et cetera. So having some flexibility to be able to move a garage or slide a building on a lot a little bit helps, you know, so that we make sure that we design useful landscape space and make sure that the building is lining up to the street appropriately, and create buffering, et cetera, so.
When I think about specifically the single-family houses in this phase versus the single-family houses we did in the first phase, single-family houses in the first phase were basically all street-loaded, and that was primarily because of the way they laid the land. We didn't have, you know, we had a kind of a round piece of land there, where the wetlands came around, and wetlands in the middle. So we're kind of hemmed in with what we could do. We've got a lot more of a grid system here. Lots are going to be a lot more uniform in this area, so I really think this approach is going to work well for that, that area.
So the image up there is the neighborhood patterns and it's guidance, but we wanted it to be meaningful, like we wanted it to be kind of zoning light to inform. This is what we expect to be in these ranges with our front facades, our front stoops, our rear garages, our side yards. But we're feeling a little bit kind of hamstrung, because we haven't laid out everything quite yet, you know, we're.
They've done all the engineering, laid the grids all out.
The engineers say it's definitely five feet per, so, and I understand that that's why we tried to kind of create fairly flexible space in bulk with good guidance toward, heading towards subdivision around what you'd expect when you see different housing types.
Nick?
Yeah.
Generally speaking, I'm comfortable with making, you know, the envelope arrangements at the subdivision level. I hope this gives you folks the ability to take a look at these layouts and find out which, what is the most conducive way to get maybe the solar elements of this, because I think you have a great opportunity now to showcase different, these different neighborhoods and different building types with the ability to take advantage of that solar. And given that, whether it's on the garage and not the house, I think giving a little bit of that flexibility for that sighting may end up being a blessing in disguise.
I have a question. Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the minimum lot area, and the single-family minimum lot area is 2,000 square feet. That's not terribly large. What's, what kind of a house can you build on 2,000 square feet?
We had a, we have a typology in mind, kind of a, we're calling it a cottage core typology, that would be more square, it would fit within that envelope, but it would basically be more or less kind of zero lot line, develop like a, like four cottages kind of a line. It's a little bit tough to verbalize it.
Well, about a 900 square foot, some one-bedroom, some two-bedroom.
So the, what we're talking about in terms of the single-family houses are.
Tiny houses.
They're 900 square feet?
Some, some of them will be. And we've also got some other, some other floor plans that are 1,800 square feet, and those will fit on the bigger, what, the size lots of those?
Forty by one, 110.
Forty and 50 by 110.
So how many square feet?
The houses?
The lots.
Five thousand, six thousand?
Because as I, I looked at the Chrisville comments, some of those lots really were, you know, were small, and it, it started to get crowded. And as I recall from when we looked at those, they were four to 5,000 square feet. So I started to try to imagine what 2,000 square feet would look like, and came up with something that actually wasn't pleasant to think about, in terms of crowding, in terms of, you, you said originally, I think, something like 200, you were envisioning 220?
Units.
Units. I've seen, it, it started to, in my mind, to reflect certain subdivisions outside of Richmond, Virginia, that came up in the 50s, in the Henrico area, where they were on extraordinarily small lots, and it didn't, didn't wear well in the long run for the people in the houses or, or they were not, they did not end up desirable neighborhoods 20 years later. And because of, I think, the size, the attempt to put in a lot of houses in the 50s, most of them, for the military folks coming back, and I would hate to see us kind of coming up with housing arrangements and lots, and a development that gets us back to the, we've got to throw up an awful lot of houses, because a lot of people want houses, so there are a lot, there's a lot of call. And to me, there's a, there has to be that sort of balance between providing housing for people, keeping it better.
Dignified, as you mean.
Dignified. And as I think about, you know, a 900 square foot, I know what that looks like, because my daughter's living in that now. And we have a chance to come up with something, whether it's affordable housing or market-rate housing, and we have a chance to come up with something better. So I'm, I'm really bothered by a 2,000 square foot minimum, because all of a sudden, within the code, within the design standards, then we have a potential for an awful lot of tiny houses sitting there.
Could I ask real quick, are all of the, these builds on these smaller lots, are they going to be governed by a whole? are they gonna be governed by a homeowners association or a condo?
Yes, the whole thing will be, and then there'll be sub-associations within.
So that, so that gives me a little bit of more comfort, knowing that there's usually a body behind it to make sure that place isn't littered with toys and bikes. And as you drive by, it just starts to look like a junkyard or, you know.
But I, if I could, could I address the, the housing types? So, and we haven't brought this to you because it's still, it's still in the works and we know we're gonna have to show this to you at subdivision. It's all cooking right now. So we've got four different, I'm wrong, four different. So we're trying to hit different markets. Like we did in phase one, we wanted different markets. But in phase one, our single-family houses, we were still stuck on that, you know, load the garage from the front, you know, everything's linear this way. And Nick and Dan did their best with us, but we were hemmed in with a site and it was, it was difficult. I don't wanna say I'm drinking the Kool-Aid now, but I'm, I'm drinking the Kool-Aid and understanding that we don't have to have all front-load garage, you know, traditional colonial with a garage on the right, drive in the front and, you know. We're gonna have an area where we're gonna have some of those because some people want those. But we also know that, you know, we need these little cottage courts. We need to, to be able to hit that, not a tiny house, but a smaller home. Not everybody wants a, a great big home. Um, so we wanna hit, you know, nine hundred square feet. We've got another model that's around fourteen hundred square feet. We've got one that's eighteen hundred. And then that eighteen hundred can easily become twenty-four hundred if you go out over the attached garage. And some of these have garages attached to the left or the right, some have behind. And we have these narrower, longer linear lots, garages are actually behind. Uh, and you'll hit a lot of those off the alleyway. Some of those may be attached to the home, some of those may be detached. So I think we've, we've got a handful of different house designs that we can hit, everything from, you know, nine hundred square feet on up to twenty-five hundred square feet on different sized lots. And what I'm envisioning with this project is we have some lots that are small that are really geared towards, all right, we know over here, nine hundred's fit, fit right there. And over here, larger homes fit. And that's all gonna be part of our subdivision process. But we've kind of laid this grid out so we can mix and match to whatever feels right or whatever the market demands are as we move through the project. So a couple hundred units, but if you, if you think about how that breaks down, you're gonna have some condominiums, we're gonna have some apartments, we're gonna have some single-family houses. And those houses are gonna be of several different styles, will be different sizes, different price points.
Wait, when this whole project started, a long ago, um, the, the very first master plan, you referenced, um, a housing development, uh, out in, I think, Bellingham or out in the Seattle area. Uh, and I was very impressed with that. And I took a look at a lot of, a lot of the houses and a lot of the projects that were done. That worked with the small houses and a lot of them were focused on the park in the center. Uh, and they were eleven hundred square feet, thousand square feet, up to about fifteen hundred, and very, very carefully done. And I thought it was an excellent design. Uh, and if that's where you're going, then I think it does meet a market that's out there. People who want a neighborhood without a lot of upkeep, but don't want a condo. You know, wanna be able to put their garden where they put their, you know, where they can put it. So I guess they, the proof is in the, is in the subdivision, but I am still queasy about a minimum, about agreeing to a minimum of a two thousand square foot lot, understanding that those apparently are the ones mostly that are the, um, have the garages in the, in the back.
It's a pocket, yeah. I mean, I think you're thinking of pocket neighborhood designed from probably Pacific Northwest.
Yeah, I, I can't remember. You, you, you referenced it when we, when, when the whole things, when this whole thing started.
I was actually in a neighborhood, I guess, in Denver, I don't know, a month and a half ago, like two months ago. And, uh, it really hit me, okay, here's where we're headed with this thing. And, and look, it does work. And even get snow there and it works. So I, I was pretty pleased with.
So like, in those pocket neighborhoods, you would, you would have a really tight lot and you do that by creating all your common spaces kind of commonly, right, around a, a park, right? And the garage is usually kind of off-site and you walk to your, to your home, to your unit.
But right now, um, I don't think I saw on your, um, starting with page forty-three, whatever this is, the single-family lane loaded, um, I don't see these, I did, I did not see, um, the pocket neighborhood concept in here.
Yep.
On how that would be designed. And yet you've talked about the pocket neighborhoods and access, um, from lanes, I guess. Um, but I don't, you know, it's not in here. And that may be more of where these small houses go rather than in the private, uh, lane-loaded. Houses, uh, lots.
We just, I, I think we just didn't get into a specific classification around the pocket neighborhood as a typology because it starts to get into a specific typology.
But, but one of the things, I, I guess one of the things is I, I look at is you talk about high density, moderate density, low density. And I start to think, well, what fits into, what are we talking about with high density, with moderate density? How many houses, how many units are we talking about when you're saying high density? How many units are we talking about moderate density? Uh, and as soon as you, you start to talk about high density but single-family, well, what, all of a sudden, now what does that look like? If you're saying high density and it's apartments, okay, you know, that I can visualize. If you're talking about high density with a lot of lots at two thousand square feet, what does that look like? Because all of a sudden, that's a whole different way of thinking about, about the housing.
Mm-hmm. So if you took the, if you took the garages away from these units and they weren't included, you had no garage essentially on that lot, say, in the, in the center of the image, that could be conceivably a two thousand square foot lot.
Street parking then? Or, or you're talking about lane, like you're talking about garage parking in the back?
It's one of those things, like we, once we get the site plan, we can show a little bit more how it, how it works. But the idea is that the house is isolated on the lot. Then you have, you have the common space that it fronts onto, an alley in the back for loading, um, where you can either fit a driveway without a garage or you have the garage attached to the home. Um, or the other option, like more of a, more of a traditional pocket neighborhood, the garage is actually off the lot. Like, in that image, the garages might be banked behind the homes. So you, essentially, you could essentially, you could park in a carport and then walk to your front door. And it, so it kind of keeps the infrastructure and the amount of paving consolidated. And it's a, you know, it's a smaller, more affordable lot. It's a, it becomes more of a compact neighborhood that's less about parking cars and garages and garage doors and more about, um, you know, interacting with your neighbors on this sidewalk as you walk from the garage to your, your front door.
More about the need for bicycle racks and bicycle lanes on some of the small, on some of the smaller, smaller roads.
This graphic sort of illustrates what you're talking about, or an option of what you're talking about.
There's, there's no real pocket neighborhood that I could, there may be, but I can't.
You see, we have a garage and you don't have a garage.
Yeah, there's, there's options where we could have an attached garage situation or even no garage, but this would be a pocket, kind of the beginnings of a pocket neighborhood design. And it's, the design, I can tell you, has evolved from that quite a bit, um, in a more attractive way, I would say, in a more efficient.
I'd like to see the evolution.
Yeah, so.
Yes, because most of these pocket neighborhoods really are, are enclosed and they're triangles or they're semicircles or, um, they're not necessarily just squares.
Right.
So, but anything other than a square becomes difficult to cite a garage. Or to create the, or to create the access to the front of, of the houses. I, I like the idea. I can't, I gotta, gotta see it.
So, one of the questions to, if I'm hearing sort of part that Rachel understands the concept but wants to, has concerns that this could go really well or it could not go well, right? And so one of the, just trying to think of what are the ways that we can help to, outside of sort of visual representations, I know you've sort of talked about wanting to come at subdivision. I mean, I was starting to think about, I know we put this in our comments and I don't think this will necessarily address it, but we've talked about, you know, trying to, at least with this base in bulk, identify minimum lot area per family as well as part of this base in bulk. But as, as this conversation's gone on, let's wonder, have, have you thought about using floor area ratio? Would that be a way, if we defined what that, what, and I, you know, I'm now looking to you for an A. I, I really don't know if that would provide us what we're looking for, or Rachel? And again, we'll need to know if other board members have similar concerns. But is that, is that a way of maybe broaching part of this design issue? To sort of say, okay, on these smaller lots, it'll only be, you know, the building can.
With the impervious cover, which, yeah, which exists in the zone. If you're thinking of floor area being two-story, so.
Right, or, you know, yeah, whether it's, you know, sort of gives you a, a sense of how big the, the structure could be or how much density of structure you could have within the area. Because I think that's your, what I'm hearing is the principal concern is not so much that you can't have two thousand square foot house, uh, lots that have attractive design as you could have two thousand square foot lots that have.
I think one of the things we've, doesn't answer that, that question to us, but one of the things that we've trying to do with these small lots is to create opportunities for individual lot ownership. I mean, often you'll see these types of neighborhoods and they're condominiums. And so that's, you know, it's two acres, but per unit, it's probably two thousand square feet of area in some of these neighborhoods, but you don't ever hit that because it's, you know, twenty units on one piece of land. So it sounds like a small lot. It is, it's sharing a lot of common infrastructure. So it, I mean, it can make it, you know, five thousand or six thousand square feet, but then they're owning to the center of the common. And then you get into other levels of kind of complications around maintenance. So, I mean, it's.
Frankly, we may be going after something we never use.
Right, exactly.
It just winds up being a condominium anyway and we don't do, we don't do the twenty-wide, twenty-four-wide. And that really was more geared towards the townhouses, I, I thought, when we were thinking about.
But there is a separate townhouse going there, separate design for that.
Yep, but.
I, I think it presents a really opportu, a really unique opportunity. Your market will dictate this, whether people buy that from you or not. But, you know, I just made a note at the beginning of our conversation on this that I, I think it's really, I appreciate that effort. And I think that for a lot of people, that could mean the difference between homeownership or renting an apartment. Um, if, you know, if their budget doesn't dictate more than a thousand dollars a month, I'm making that up. But, um, but if they see the opportunity here and don't need a lot of space, but it's important to them to, to own their own home and have, um, input on things like garden or outdoor space, maybe they don't need or want a car. And for, for somebody like that, having a smaller footprint home means they have more yard than a larger home on a larger lot with a garage. Um, I, I think that's the type of diversity that, that frankly, we could benefit greatly from here um, in, in attracting that type of people. They might be older, they might be younger, you might have older next door to younger living in the same style, um, style house. And it, I, I could just see that being attractive to a variety of people and a, and a different variety of people than some of the others of our more traditional sized and scaled homes.
And the, the intent with this neighborhood too, and it should be kind of depicted in that sketch, is that there's a lot of variation, like even within each block. And there's, I don't think, any intention on any of our part to lot farm out two thousand square foot lots everywhere. That's, that's not, it wouldn't be conducive to a good diverse neighborhood.
We want to have an area where we've got some different sized lots.
Yeah, so, um.
But could somebody define for me what a high-density, moderate-density, low-density, whatever the divisions are that you have? What, what you're talking about when you say it's high-density, how many, how many units? Moderate-density, how many units, what's on an average?
Or range, as you say.
So I think, I mean, higher density, we're anticipating those are apartment areas of the project um, and condos. And those are probably in the fifteen to thirty units an acre range. I'm gonna probably hire twenty to thirty because the zoning allows twenty units per acre overall. We're gonna have higher density areas where you have apartments, where you have that probably thirty units per acre. And then we're gonna have, below is gonna be now six to ten units per acre, single-family.
Phase one averaged out at six or seven units an acre.
Yeah, and moderate.
Overall, it's, so not dissimilar to phase one where you have an apartment section, you have some different housing types. That's what we're excited about, is trying is broader range.
And they're right next door to each other, or could be, right.
You gotta answer the question, though.
So highest density is thirty units per acre and the lower end is gonna be six to eight units. And then moderate is in between.
But the concern is, like, the, the interest is at the higher, what the higher end of the threshold is right now than the lower end. So we could build slightly lower density. Because six to eight units per acre at, on single-family is still barely moderately higher density for a single-family, so.
This helps me visualize, you know, when you start to look at, well, this area is this.
The zoning allows twenty units per acre. We didn't touch it in phase one, we're not gonna, overall. We're not gonna get close to that overall in phase two. There's gonna be areas that are apartments that by their nature are gonna be in that thirty units per acre range. They're offset and they're more than offset by the areas that are gonna be, you know, five to eight units, single-family, you know, alley-loaded, similar to other projects in town. Eastern Village, Dustin Crossing. These pocket neighborhoods are gonna be denser because they have a lot of smaller houses. But I think we're hopeful to do maybe two pockets that might have eight to ten units per pocket. So to Nick's point, we're not gonna do, you know, two hundred tiny houses. I think the market's there for that work.
To try it, we certainly would like to have a dozen, dozen of them.
Have that, that housing opportunity, which I think there's a market for it.
Could you define a linear park?
A narrow, long park.
What, what is on, what is, what constitutes that park besides a trail?
Um, like how's it programmed, what, what might go in it?
Yeah.
Um, we don't know yet. I mean, I think it's, it, you know, is, is part of the next level of design. We, honestly, we haven't gotten to that level of design yet.
A little green.
Yes, it would, it would be, I'm not trying to skirt the question at all.
Yeah. Well, only a little, but.
A, a little, a little bit, but, but in, in a genuine way. I mean, really, really, you know, design-wise, we just, we just haven't gotten to that level of design.
Dig a little deeper, okay.
But, um, I think we had in mind, in particular, with the linear park that's along Willowdale, right? Between Downs Road and Willowdale, we're calling that the linear park. The idea would be, um, I think Staff actually had a great idea with a kind of multi-use path. I think that's cool. Maybe decreasing the, um, impervious surface or the street width a bit on Downs Road and dedicating a little bit more of that paving, whether it's soft surface or, or impervious paving, into a multi-use path that lives within that, that quote-unquote linear park is cool. Um, that could be a nice way to animate that space. The other idea being this.
Just, just for a minute, just let me ask you a question. So along that area, bikes could, bicycles?
It could be like a bike path.
Wheelchairs?
Sure.
Like the one on Gore Road.
Yeah.
It's more like, um, I think it would be like the Western Promenade.
Yes.
Just like that.
Yeah, not a like mulch path, that's not one.
No, there's, there's the road and there's the park and then there's a cliff.
Yeah, it would be, it's, it's a, it's a. It's a, it's a separated multimodal path, right? And, um, along that, we were thinking there could be features or there could be, um, kind of waypoints or moments, right, along that path where you have, maybe you have interpretive elements. I know that, I've been working with Drew quite a bit on Stormwater Design. And we've been talking about some bioremediation cells along that. And we've been talking about some bioremediation cells along that park space. And there could be opportunity where you can stop, there's a bench, and there's a bit of interpretive signage that talks about the water cycle and treatment and plants. Something that celebrates, um, that, uh, the Willowdale corridor in that landscape. So, that's, that's in as far as I've thought about it at this point, what that linear park space is, but it would, it would be-
I'm gonna quickly wrangle us back over to space and bulk. I don't, I don't think we wrapped it up, and I, I wanna stay on that topic and just square it away, because if it's left loose, then it's just gonna haunt us in a couple minutes. So, can, can we just-
It's getting to January.
Yeah. Roger, uh, I don't know, how do you feel about the space and bulk discussion before we move on from it?
Well, it seems to me, and maybe I'm not understanding this, but it seems to me we got two issues, two overriding issues. One is, as I understand Staff, you wanna make sure that it's clarified. So, when, in the future, if we have other large phase projects, there's sort of like a benchmark, or at least there's, there's a definition?
No, it, it wasn't so much about this phase establishing other phases. It was really about lot owners within this phase.
Oh, I, that's what I mean, that's what I mean. When I, when I'm saying phases, I mean, like, um, I mean, oh, let me just continue, maybe it'll make more sense. I, I see your point of view, because you, you're basically looking at what the market will bear, and that's where you want the flexibility. But Staff is concerned that by giving you that flexibility, that, that you're kind of leaving yourself open for future developments? Or maybe, maybe I misunderstood that?
Again, when you say future developments, it's really about just-
Not this place, but this particular project, but say, say somebody else wants to develop another place over a multi-year, uh, you know, with, with many, many dwellings and everything.
Yeah.
And, and they wanna also go by, you know, I mean, the market is changing. We're, we're seeing the market change, like at Eastern Village and all these other places. And I think you wanna be flexible. You don't wanna be tied into something concrete. So, but I think Staff wants to, you, you wanna-
When we get to subdivision, we will be tied.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
But I think that can, that can answer the Staff's issue with, you know, how do we enforce that? And what is the, you know, what does the homeowner know later on?
Yeah, no, no, I was saying-
But it was a bigger concern about after we build it, 10 years down the road, you know, what's the next user? Two users down the road, what are their rules and regs? And what do they do about that separation? I think we nail, we nail that at the subdivision phase.
Our concerns have not been about sort of precedent-setting for other developments. This board isn't a precedent-setting board, and each project has its own ordinance to go by, so-
Okay, then, I misunderstood, that'll be a conversation.
Yeah, that was, that wasn't a concern.
You, space and bulk, good on that? And I get the sense that there'll be some language worked out?
Yeah, I think if, if the board's comfortable with the direction, I think that's, there was, I think, really, a number of things came to light tonight that, I don't know, you know, certainly helped Staff understand a little bit, and hopefully helped-
There was some narrative that was added tonight that certainly helped.
I think we can work through it.
I think we have pretty good, Staff feels like we have pretty good direction, um, so.
All right. One topic down. Uh, the, one, one of the other things that, and I don't know how this plays in, probably more along the lines, you know, green space and just the overall site. But I know there was some question about whether or not defining the street types at this point in time. And I heard you address it during the presentation, that you still don't know what this all is gonna look like at the end. And I guess it begs the question, at least from my mind, is this another item that during subdivision is more appropriate to take up? Or are, is Staff saying, we really kind of need to know what these streets are gonna be as we go?
Yeah, and if I, if I might, I think that the issue might be getting bigger than what Staff really intended it to be at this point. Really, what we're talking about, and what I'll do is I'll, I'll have folks, um, on the connectivity plan, there are street typologies that are identified as Downs Road, secondary street, tertiary street. When you flip just two or three pages later, and we look at our, our, um, oh, I went to the wrong one. Our cross-sections, these are identified as street type A, street type B. All we, all we're asking for is-
Sync them together.
Sync them together. So, at this point, we're, we're not talking about, I sort of heard Dan, and I understand where you guys went with it, about connecting to our street acceptance ordinance, that's really not what we're talking, it's really, that's, it's-
Gotta get a terminology meeting.
It's just about terminology on these plan sheets. So, I think that is a relatively, unless other board members have issues, I think it was a relatively light lift.
Second problem solved.
Just cruising.
And Jamelle, I'm capturing, I mean, I know you and Angela have had more conversations about that, I don't mean to-
We did have a specific comment, just from past discussions with the applicant on the connectivity plan, about more of the colors or the type of street. So, if you look at the plan, um, there's that street that goes along the park, linear park, from the Downs Road. We understood that to be come like a main street into the project, but it's not labeled that way. So, we were just sort of confused if we misunderstood, or if it's maybe labeled wrong, or tertiary is a word that I don't understand.
That, that street right there, thank you, Rocky, if you look back.
Yeah, we understood that one to become like the down, the main-
All the way into the town center?
Yeah, it was, is that not the case?
We're not, uh, we're not there yet, yeah, but, um-
Okay. So, we were, we thought that would, we thought that one should be red, basically, as a sub-collector, or whatever you wanna call it.
I don't, I mean, I don't, it, it make, it, that's plausible, we could make it red.
Yeah, I guess we're questioning it.
It's kind of a, like a primary, or, I don't know, secondary feeder for the neighborhood, right?
Yeah, if you, if you think about the way that goes, people living in here are gonna use that.
Yeah, that's gonna be more traffic, that makes sense.
But it's-
But we're not necessarily at the point where we'd say, like, it's a primary connector all the way into town center.
Just was questioning it.
Yeah, I think it was really about what type of street type, again, A, B, or C, are we doing? Right, and so, yeah, they get, again, just based on the prior conversations, it seemed like that might be a busier road, then maybe that-
We're getting a connectivity plan with, uh, cross-sections.
My one question is, is that a dead-end alley on the-
I have the same question.
Go all the way over, yeah, right there.
Yeah.
Uh, on this plan, it is?
It's a diagram.
It won't be.
It won't be, yeah.
Okay.
Based on, like, the internal design work we've been doing, that won't be the condition.
Okay.
We wouldn't intend to do something like this, like that.
No, but it's on the plan, so I didn't know what.
Yeah, we're showing alley areas and street areas.
Same, what about for the one that looks like it would otherwise connect the primary road?
Yeah, the other one.
The blue road in the middle?
The dead-end.
That road, now there's a dead-end.
Yeah, there's a, there's a dead-end alley there, right?
Oh, that?
Yeah, so, that one, um, would likely connect into Downs Road. And we're studying whether, we may have one or two dead-end alleys, but they would be very short stubs, so they'd almost act like a hammerhead in a fire turnaround. And so, we're trying to balance, we want these, these, all these lots to be alley-loaded, and we're trying to also limit, uh, limit curb cuts and access to Downs Road, right?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, we're trying to balance, we wanna have that, that connection in the secondary, you know, at least two points in connection to any given site. But we don't wanna create too many curb cuts or create sightline issues, especially along Downs Road, so-
Yeah, and there's a lot of traffic considerations with that too, relative to site distances, where cars are actually entering, so we have, we have to look at that.
And that's like getting into engineering, yeah, level of detail that we just need to work out a little more.
So, I have, I have one just recommendation slash suggestion, that, that road that does split off, that looks like it could potentially just run right into the center. You thought about, you, you're gonna build it as it's gonna suit the needs for this part of it, and you're probably gonna have a little bit of foresight into what it might lead into. I guess my concern would be, what if it's a smaller type, and we find that we're feeding much more traffic into the center of that area? Then maybe that road could have been better designed. We're gonna leave some easements or right-of-ways if it ever needed that expansion. I mean, if, because if you're building right up, you know, right up onto a sidewalk, you know, now you're talking about, I don't, you're dealing with a big traffic problem at that point, because you can't tear the house down and expand the road.
But we wouldn't necessarily wanna build, like, an oversized right-of-way to accommodate, like-
Correct, I get that.
Like, if it's, you know, if it's, if it becomes a busier road, like, uh, say a 60-foot right-of-way, which is a pretty good average, that can accommodate street parking, um, street trees and stuff like that.
Without that known entity, whether or not that almost becomes your primary road into the center of it, the project?
Right.
I could just see it happening, you, you know what I mean? Just if it's, I mean, I, I don't know how that next phase looks, but just the direction it takes right into where-
I think that's why we pointed it out.
Yeah.
And have you thought about maybe providing where you do show the right-of-way continuing, which we appreciate, because that's the whole idea, is interconnectivity? But to get to Nick's point, if Downs Road is really where you want people, the primary traffic going, maybe having that be a terminus where it is now, and then having the streets go out and around it? So, you know, so that it's not-
Instead of having this, it's up here, or it's over there.
I can tell you, it may very well do that, so-
So, that way, to, to address Nick's concern, where you would think, okay, if, if I'm going in here and I wanna get going-
It's probably not gonna be the condition that that becomes a, a primary arterial street all the way into the center. It's probably gonna, the, the, the next intersection is probably gonna be outside.
The initial design, we can promote the traffic to go to Downs Road by doing stop control in the other roads.
You know, no one wants to go 200 feet and stop every, if you need to get to the town center. So, we can promote traffic to go on the Downs Road, which is where we want it to go, that can handle. So, I think during the design phase, we gotta look at it, and maybe it is shifting the road so that it's not as easy as a four-way stop. You have to turn and go, and that really discourages people from wanting to take that road to the town center.
Roundabout, roundabout, do it.
In this area, and you're gonna head towards the town center, yeah, you'll, you'll go this way. But if you're coming from another area, you're gonna be on here on the Downs Road.
That's gonna be the travel route.
Yeah, we wanna, we wanna-
We're gonna keep people wanting to be there.
Okay.
You wanna design it to achieve that, so-
I guess my overall general comment, though, is if you can see into your crystal balls, like, if you're like, ugh, that's got the potential. Like, making sure that there's something there, the extra space, or whether it's-
Or that it works when they want.
Redesign it, right, that's all, I think.
As it seems to be the other thing to think about, given that that's quite a, the gravel feature, the gravel wetland feature in, in the park, is that, um, if there are other amenities in that area, such as a gazebo, or concerts, or anything else, you actually are gonna, there are gonna be a lot of people that head that way. So, you're really gonna have to think about the usage of the park, as well as whether people are just gonna use that road to head into the town center.
I don't see that, that road being a through road all the way to the town center, but I think it's a, that point taken, it's a good comment.
Well, I think we see this park as more of a neighborhood park. I do see, you know, a park coming. But I think this is more neighborhood kind of use, not that somebody wouldn't drive there, they might, uh, but I-
Well, as I said, it depends on, on what you, how you're gonna program that, how the neighborhood folks are gonna program it, because even, even as a neighborhood park, folks might wanna have an outdoor concert on 4th of July, you know, who knows? And if they do, that's going to, you know, it goes in the leader, and somebody's gonna say, oh, I'd wanna go there too. And all of a sudden, it's a, it's, if it is itself attractive, people are gonna go to it. Yeah, people are gonna, people are gonna go to it, because it is attractive.
Cover that one, anyone else?
Okay.
Did I miss anything huge before I open it up to just general thoughts and comments?
You touched on the electric?
I think they did, in their, um, your intention is above ground, only on Downs Road, and then it dives under everywhere else, correct?
Is there a chance we could take it down through the Downs Road at this point now? I, we missed the boat on the first phase, I get that, but I'm always reminded of downtown Falmouth on Route 1, and they took their three phases and they buried it all. And it, you drive down there and you look up, and it's nice not to see wires. Is there a way we can get that trough so that we don't see wires?
This way, not a way that I'm willing to do, but-
What if then you also consider putting, you know, some of this open area in your stormwater drain area, and we get some generation there?
That could come, two different things, the way I-
Yeah, but it all kinda, it, it becomes the, the bigger picture.
So, I pushed to stay overhead. You think about Falmouth, where they put that underground at Falmouth, it was pretty well all developed, they knew what was there for uses.
Sure they did.
You put that kind of power underground-
But you know exactly what's gonna be your uses here.
Only to there.
Yeah. I'm just saying, can we get it to here at least underground? It may have to go back up, but I don't know, I was in, uh, Rhode Island, in Providence, and the entire city has worked its way, and now it's all underground. But we're talking from here to here.
If it has to go in a duck bank, that's not the place to do it.
Why?
It's too expensive, and you don't, you get too many unknowns. Duck bank is a pretty, you know, a pretty big thing to bite off. I think we're gonna wind up having to do that when we get to the downtown, because we're not gonna wanna look at those poles. But I, I envision, you know, this coming along the, on the left-hand side of the Downs Road is really not visually horrid. I mean, look at Haggis Parkway, you know, it was done out there.
Yeah, I know.
Think you put underground there. That duck bank system is, is big money, and you have a lot of, we know a lot of unknowns. What's that?
I didn't know enough back then.
Uh, that's all, it's a-
I know it's a, I know it's a financial thing.
It's a financial thing, a lot of unknowns, and that's the, that's the piece that worries me. We know we need three big blocks to build that.
There's not a lot of unknowns here, Rocky, you know it's gonna be residential and-
This will all be under.
Yeah.
It's this we wanna stay overhead.
Yeah, and I, I know, but-
Drop down in and feed. And we'd put it, I mean, I'd put it on the other side of Millbrook, if you could get it done, but you couldn't.
I mean, can't get it done.
No. That's the, I don't believe it's feasible to, to do at this point. I do think we're gonna need to buy it off, we need to, it's a, it's a-
I made a generally positive note that I appreciated the effort that you were going underground.
We were at the neighborhood, yeah, like, totally.
And I, I recognize, um, I recognize that that comes at an expense. But that I, I think it also, you know, obviously, there's aesthetic benefits, but from someone who works almost on a daily basis, trying to get poles moved for one reason or another, sometimes very large, very large poles, um, that, that, I just think it, it could, you know, it simplifies it from that standpoint, um, until you get to the, you know, the point that you're talking about, which is when you go, when you make that commitment, especially for underground, three-phase, you wanna make sure that-
We'll get you enough distributed generation in here that you won't have to worry about, I'm over here. So, you can drop it down here, and we'll be all right over here. We'll worry about that at the subdivision of the other part.
Any, uh, uh, board, uh, any thoughts, comments on, or just general level of comfort of keeping three phases above ground at this point on Downs only, on Downs Road only?
I understand it, it doesn't mean I'm comfortable. Just to be on record.
Rachel, Roger, Staff?
Yeah, I'm fine on that.
All right, uh, other big topics?
Covered space and bulk, uh, roadways, covered the cultivation, easement.
As Jamelle sort of flips through there, one question I had, and I appreciate the, the update to sort of the, um, mixed-use or non-residential areas. But one thing I was starting to think about is given, again, sort of the, the, the range of permitted uses and the lot sizes had, you know, might this be an opportunity to just sort of focus that in? What type of scale of development are you, any non-residential? I think we generally talked about these sort of neighborhoods-
What type of scale of development are you, any non-residential, I think we've generally talked about these sort of neighborhoods scale type stuff. I just wonder if we wanna really codify that, so again, that, I, I think part of the, part of the issues that, um, questions that I've been receiving are, well, what happens down the road? Right? Someone goes to the crossroads plan development district zone in our zoning book, and it says they can have, um, I don't know, um.
Grocery store.
What's that?
A grocery store.
Why, why wouldn't that be, so I just sort of wondered, uh, this master plan process isn't an opportunity to really just sort of define what those permitted uses might be? And give it a, a size, or at least some type of intensity, sort, in a range, like we did. I think Rachel asked a question about what do we mean by high, moderate, and low density? What do we mean by residential scale density, you know? Right now, we're talking about five thousand.
There's no definition for that in them.
Right, and so, and again, it doesn't have to be, you know, locked down to the nth degree, but I think if we can build some additional language in the master plan document that sort of says, okay, there, you know, you know. Whether we, we talk about it in terms of traffic, or building size, or type, or, but just maybe, maybe just to find that a little bit further, so that, again, when someone comes along, you know, down the road to buy the lot and says, great, I got a non-residential lot, I'm gonna do one of these things that doesn't actually fit. We can point them back to the master plan and say, no, you know, these are the type of uses we're really talking about here, so.
So do we do that now, or do we do that as we do subdivisions?
So I think, I, I think, again, from, in the master plan, it would be starting to codify, or, or put, put the parameters in place, and then I think.
We were, yeah, I mean, to answer your question, we need to talk more about actual square footage. We're thinking small office that would likely be on the first floor of a mixed-use building. Apartments, second, third floor, small office, maybe it's real estate office, maybe it's, um, you know, another, a professional, um, that lives in the neighborhood, or wants to be, have a business in the neighborhood. I'm thinking it's not more than five, you know, five thousand, six thousand square feet max, maybe if there's a coffee shop, that's probably two thousand square feet max. Uh, those are the types of things, I mean, last meeting, we didn't, we didn't really have that planned, we batted it, because we think it's a good idea, there's some potential, we don't know if there's a market, but we hope there is, so. That's, those are the uses that immediately come to mind, um.
Yeah, and I, and I don't mean through the master plan to, that's right, we're, we're sitting here now in, you know, almost twenty twenty, and we could be thinking about someone, you know, three to five years from now has a great idea, and we have, you know, so. I just think the master plan can start to maybe expand on these general parameters, so that we can, you know, um, not necessarily pin our, pin yourselves into something in particular at the time, but at least there's something to point back to. That when someone wants to come and do a big twenty thousand square foot, uh, fast food restaurant, I know drive-throughs aren't allowed, but something to that effect, we could say, well, no, that, that wasn't the intent for this master plan, that was the intent for the downtown areas, you know?
Yep.
So.
On the other hand, something like the table and tap down at those quarters, as a neighborhood restaurant, might be perfect.
Might fit, might fit.
Yeah, that, that might fit, so we don't wanna say, you know, no to a restaurant, but, uh, we wanna say some sort of size that gets.
Yeah.
That people can perhaps come and say, well, you know, we need one more thousand square feet to make this work, but, um. I, I, I think the emphasis that we, one emphasis to place on it is absurd, is that it's a commercial operation that's of service to that community. And if you start to talk about it servicing that community, rather than a destination necessarily for, for other folks. But I think a couple of things, five thousand square feet is a good, a good max, as I look at the, um, I can't, I think that's West, I'm trying to figure it out. The amount of land there, the amount of buildable area, really isn't conducive to something, to a bunch of things that are terribly large, you know, right now, yeah. And then we could give examples such as a small neighborhood restaurant, a coffee shop, a daycare center, a yoga studio, you know.
It would be difficult to fit within our, the street grid that we're establishing at this level, anything that doesn't fit.
Yeah.
The scale of the neighborhood, you have to dimensionally, it, it would, wouldn't this would work?
So including that, including that, the, the scale that, that, that fits in with the scale of the neighborhood also starts to eliminate ten, fifteen thousand square foot places.
Won't this neighborhood be about ten minute, a ten-minute walk to the core, what you used to refer to as the core?
At the most.
At the most, right? And that's where you're gonna have like potential restaurants and things like that, shops and things like that, right?
Any other major issues?
Your artist rendering with a car charger, I like that.
So, I think we tackled the major, major issues, I can open it up for any general comments, rolling up on two hours, for anyone keeping track of time.
Let me, let me just ask, when, uh, when you were here before, I, didn't you indicate that you were gonna do this, you were planning on building this out in two phases?
It'll actually be more phases than that.
More, okay.
So our, our intention would be to come, come back to you folks with a kind of a master subdivision.
Okay.
Create development areas, and then come back again, when we know what the development in that area is, get that approved, and we'll move, it would be other areas that we'll, that we'll move on to. So I think there's, there's a bunch of bites at the apple here as far as approvals go for the, for the planning board. Because we, we need to, we need to break it down into bite-sized pieces.
And you, and your, your initial phases will be along the Downs Road area?
Mm-hmm.
Going up towards where.
Right, and that'll help us fund the infrastructure to build the Downs Road, and we'll be on either side of that to start with. Exactly.
Any other questions from board, or even applicant at this point? Jen, Jen's got a few.
Um, I've, I'm cross, I've crossed a lot off, that's for sure.
That's good.
Um. Just, uh, um, another, thank you for the, um. The, the planned active connectivity of this phase in particular. I, I came here from a meeting unrelated, but through which we were just really struggling with, um, the neighborhood that we, or, or parts of our community. That were not, um, given this sort of level of thoughtfulness when they were built out decades ago. Um, and, and how do we, how do we move forward with, you know, neighborhoods that were not designed with trail connections, were not designed even for sidewalks? Um, and certainly not for roads that included any type of bike lane, or transit provisions, or any, on-street parking, or any of that. Um, that it's, it's an uphill battle, and when you have, when your neighborhood is fully built out, to an extent, we're adding or changing the existing, um, roadway or right-of-way like that, is, it's basically impossible, so. From where we sit today on this day, um. I, I, I think we generally, we all feel that these are important, and so I hope they continue to be important in the, the decades ahead. Um, but at the very least, planning for them feels like a good idea right now, so thank you for doing that. And not just planning for them, but like continuing to really integrate them into these plans, so, you know, your, your comment about how that, you know, the offshoot of that road was, was not intended to be sort of a primary vehicle route, but that maybe it has the potential to be a primary route in another way. Um, and you're, you're providing for that connectivity, I just, I'm, I think future, future generations will benefit from that. I have a couple of questions about the DOT process that you are undergoing, and, um. And they're, they're mostly questions generally, um, without, I, I'm curious if there's any guess at this point, I'm sure it's a guess, but, uh, at what point. We might start to see or be talking about off-site mitigation, and if so, how far out, uh, like linearly, distance-wise? Are you looking?
In terms, linear, area-wide, beyond our intersections. In terms of off-site mitigation, uh, that's gonna happen soonest, it's gonna be a connection to Higgs Parkway. It's, you know, the, the development in the town center, so from a chronological, linear fashion, um, that'll likely be made. As sort of a major form of mitigation connectivity, um, with a new road out to Higgs Parkway and, uh, regardless of intersection improvements. And, um, depending on the quantity of development up by Payne Road, um, and then how quickly the nation district builds out, then. Whether there's other commercial uses up, up there, then that intersection will be further improved, um, and Payne Road between that intersection, exit forty-two, will need some expansion. Route one, at some point, needs some improvement, beyond, the signals need sort of improvement, like the equipment there probably needs improvement sooner, but from a capacity standpoint, actually it has a lot of capacity, so it's not like that needs imminent major improvements. And we've been working on the term bike authority as to what's necessary exit forty-two that relates to this project. Beyond that, through the DOT process, we're in the middle of it, so like, we're looking at. How far out are we studying, and beyond impact fees, what are those other things, so we don't, we aren't at a place yet where there's, um, issues or permits. Far out that are assigned to this project and the timelines, so that, I think that'll bear itself out, take course in the next four hours.
They're looking at two miles out.
They're looking at, they're studying two miles out. That doesn't mean mitigation is assigned two miles out.
Sure.
So that's a TBD in terms of other, other things, we continue on the transit thing to work with those agencies, um, for opportunities, but that's an ongoing play, you know? So, but that's still an active conversation.
Thank you for segueing into my next question.
Okay.
Which is about whether or not there's any, um, current monitoring going on in terms of, uh, trips or traffic associated with the Phase One build-out. Um, in general, and then more specifically about any activity that, and this could be purely anecdotal in the last part of this question, but, um, just whether or not you've seen anyone. That's living there now, using the, um, trail network, sidewalks, tran, is there buses running through there now? Do you have any knowledge of usage of that yet, either?
Sidewalk use is high, um. I don't, I don't spend weekends, there's, I don't know, a lot of the trail use. Um, I, but I think there's a fair amount of activity, you probably know better, Rocky, on that.
It's pretty well-used, and, and just to back up for Phase One for a minute, we'll have, uh, I believe by Christmas, all but three or four economy names will be fully occupied. And I think there are about six houses that will spill over into early January, uh, for, you know, being occupied, so we're, we're pretty close to fully occupied. And I would say, in my experience, sidewalk system, trail system, it's getting used. I don't know if anybody's using the bus, the bus is there every day, um, but I don't have experience with it, whether or not it's getting used.
And I, uh, should zoom out, follow up on some things, like, I'll fire with that.
Just, I'm just really curious.
We can also inquire, at least with, pretty easily check with our, uh, our apartment residents and economy grants system. I can, I can get somebody to send a question here on some of those, right?
I think there's increasing opportunity with independent senior too, coming online for that.
Kevin's project.
Kevin's project, um, last kind of auto dependent.
What everyone was a memory, is there a memory care in there?
A memory care facility that's under construction right now, it's not occupied, so that'll be May-ish. I don't think there's many those re- residences.
No, they're not riding the bus or anything like that.
They have their own bus.
Actually, yeah, but.
They have their own bus.
Um, and the only other thing, the only other note that I had, and it's very specific, I just purely forgot about it from earlier, but back to the topic of setbacks. Um, I think that, so the comment was made about having a minimum setback of twenty feet from a garage space to the sidewalk. Um, and based on some of the, you know, preliminary sketches anyway, it generally looks like the thought is that a, the sidewalk network here would continue to be a consistent distance from the gutter line, but that if there's any place where. You might run into the issue of having a garage base and sort of a, a driveway with a sidewalk that's setback further from the road, that might feel like a place where somebody could stack a second car, and then, um, just be a little deeper, but, um. So just being mindful of that, certainly the, the nod to, uh, being mindful of not having private parking activity blocking that part of the public network. It's good, just wanna make sure that's, uh, relevant for anywhere.
That was one of those things we picked up with, with, uh, actually, I learned it when we were doing our project toward Westbrook, and then really with Phase One. You know, you don't want those cars blocking that sidewalk.
Yeah.
And so, but, but when you think about that, that's really only where we have front-load garages.
True, right.
Which is not gonna be everywhere in this, you know, we're gonna have a handful of those situations, so we need to be really mindful of how we set those houses, how we set those sidewalks, so that people are gonna park in the driveway here. You only have fourteen feet that are gonna block the sidewalk, so, twenty feels, I think, I think in Phase One, the shortest distance we have, and Jay, I don't know if you remember, I think may, we might be at eighteen on some of them. But I think we felt like twenty was the, was the right number to shoot for. But we had to do some jockeying in Phase One with the, with the sidewalk in a few places.
Sure.
You know, it was gonna be here, we pulled it back a little bit, so.
It was a much more constrained site.
It was a much more constrained site.
Can I, I, just a general question, when you build garages, is there a standard size that you build, like say it's a, a two-star garage, is there a standard, like a minimum size that you would build? And the reason why.
If I'm building it, it needs, a two-car garage is forty-four by twenty-four.
Okay, 'cause I, I happen to know somebody who moved into a new house, and they can barely fit their two cars in the garage. And I thought that was kind of, I mean, I, I suspect most people don't have any idea about that, they never think about that, you know?
It's typically, you know, a lot of builders will call it twenty-two foot by garage, a two-car garage, twenty-two by twenty-two, and we've got some, and we'll build some that way, and, but you won't hear me say, hey, you've got a two-car garage, it's a garage and a half. It's a place to keep.
Car and motorcycle on the lawn, that's, that's all it is.
Really, twenty-four by twenty-four is the right, is a two-car.
And that's a standard in, basically, in the industry, for the most part?
It's my standard.
Okay.
It was my dad's standard, so.
Any other?
Yeah, just, has Jen all done?
I'm all done, yes.
I, I just have a general question, Rocky, on, um, on page twelve of this thing here, you show the general layout of the whole place. When you start to work on this, uh, town center residential district, and you start to reroute Downs Road.
Yes.
I, what, what's gonna happen to the existing road that basically goes straight?
So.
Is that gonna remain there, because the Downs is still gonna be essentially operating for a couple of years?
So the Down, the plan is to operate the Downs for a couple of more years. There'll always be a connective, you'll always be able to get from Route One to Payne Road.
Yeah.
We'll have to reroute that as, as we go, but there's a, there's a pretty good section, uh, that goes away in between some wetland, I don't know if I can, is it right there? I think I can show you. Right now, you know, the Downs Road comes in like this, and then it kind of comes down.
What goes down?
The red lines along, it's, oh yeah, I'm sorry, it's the red line. That was you here.
The red line's existing Downs Road, right?
Yes. Hey, it's late. So this section of the road will go away, and this, our plan is to be able to nip that wetland back together.
Yeah.
So, but this road gets, gets built out, and then gets rerouted, so I'm not sure if I'm answering your question, but.
Right.
A lot of this section of road goes away, gets rerouted over here, this goes away, doesn't get replaced, because you. This goes away, doesn't get replaced because you're gonna come down and then you're gonna come up, you can come into, into Center Street, come out here. And then you basically have, um, Center Street in the Innovation District coming down into the Parkway. That's your vision.
Yeah, yeah. Those are kind of the two of me.
Yeah, but this is already there now. So with the Downs Road, you know, the Downs Road goes from Route One to Payne. Yeah. The Downs Road's gonna stop, it's gonna hit Center Street. Yeah. This will have to get renamed at some point. I don't know what that'll be, but figure that out when we get there. But as we're moving through the project, you'll always be able to get from Route One to Payne. Okay. In some. So, so when you start this residential development, you're not gonna reroute the whole Downs Road? No. You're just gonna go.
Gonna match back.
Right, instead of time or something like that. Yeah, we'll keep matching back onto the existing road until we get to the point where it's, it's all done, it's all rebuilt.
Any other questions from the Board? Staff? Good. Applicant? Good.
Get a thumbs up?
We are gonna see you next time, I'll clean that a little, and hopefully it will be quick, since we invested a good amount of time and discussion on this tonight. That's my sentiment. Other Board members, of course, are free to disagree.
Uh, can we do it as part of a regular meeting or do we need to work out?
Yes.
Okay, so it'd be part of a regular.
I think you, yeah.
So, so basically we're talking about clarification of the parking spaces?
I think, I think that's what, there's, I mean, there's some other little stuff that I think will work out, but I think the parking space, the parking space needs to be, uh, written level of comfort for both parties.
I get that. Written parking space.
So.
So essentially it'd just be considered a returning application for submission purposes? Basically? That makes sense to everyone?
Yep.
Yep.
That said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, is there a second? I'll look there.